...hooked up to oxygen and could barely stand. Lean against the door of the backyard and shoot squirrels at a 22. So is that the quality of life he had when it was 308 out in the woods, you know, after DNO? What the hell it was, you know? He said, "Well, there's four more squirrels out there that are roaming around." So I think that's not a decision that we would have made because of the kind of care that we got. The thing that pushes me over on the edge on this thing is the experience of a friend mine who found her husband who had committed suicide with an firearm. The devastation of vaccine for her. It might be on anything that I could even comprehend. I can't even get my arms around what that must have looked like. That is, and I think we heard some testimony, that unfortunately was becoming one of the ways in which people are dealing with this terrible decision at the end of their life. I'd like to give them that option. And that was, that was the piece that made the choice even with the experiences that I've had. That's the one that moved me to want to be in a position to support this.
Then first team, then for some time assembly, yeah.
Thank you, Senator. I'm very supportive of this bill, and I'll tell you why. I think it was a really well thought out. There's many steps in here that have been proven with other states and in other states that give people the option to, A, make sure they know what they're doing, have their family on board, not put any, any stipulations or concerns on the doctor, a doctor doesn't have to do it, or on anybody else who doesn't want to take, you know, responsibility for it. So it's your own, to me, this is the most personal liberty that you could probably have in your whole life. So my dad had hospice, my husband's a hospice volunteer, and some of the different organizations that came up, it really kind of hit me because it kind of felt like it was, this was a place to have a platform versus, and it's not, that wasn't the subject. The subject is these people being able to die on their own when they're, when they are about to die within a certain time limit. So it's not just saying, "Oh, I feel like I want to die because I've had this accident" or something. You have to be near death. You have to be, you know, in incredible pain. So when organizations came up, you know, and I love hospice, I love respite care, but this isn't about that. Yes, we should be giving life to them and supporting them. Yes, we should be helping people with disabilities, but that's, that's not for me the point here at all. So, and I think, and also the religion. It, it doesn't get into anybody's religion. If you're, if you're, you don't believe in it, you don't have to do it. It doesn't have, so it is, to me, the ultimate liberty, that if I'm dying anyway, I'm hurting, there's no way for me to get any kind of comfort and solace. I know my mom wouldn't have chosen it, my dad, my dad wouldn't have chosen it. You know, he was a pretty strong Catholic, and he said, "No way." He, you know, he wasn't a good lawyer, but I know if I, for my mom right now, I'd like to have her have that choice. And if I ever get in that situation, I'd like to have that choice. So anyway, that's kind of where I'm at.
Representative Heinrichsen.
Thanks. You know, I love that idea of personal liberty. I think this is ultimate personal liberty. I've seen many people die in many different circumstances, from intensive care units being there for three or four months on machines, to households with the curtains blowing and families holding hands. And, and I think people, you know, we used to, we used to say, is the enemy, is the enemy death or is the enemy suffering? And for many, many physicians, the enemy was death, because we were just trained to do everything you can to keep life going, keep life going. And the family and often the nurses would say, "He's suffering, suffering, suffering." But we'd say, "There's more you can do, there's more you can do." So it was this, you know, challenge, is the, who is the enemy, death or suffering? We talk about that a lot. So to, to let a person decide when suffering is enough and that death is okay, that is the ultimate liberation. So I'm happy to support this, and I, and I, I feel it's a, you know, as sad as death is, I feel this is a happy thing, because I feel like people are going to get in, as a neurologist, I don't cure many diseases, and I always feel like I'm on the journey with people. And life is a journey, it ends in death. And when death is going to be coming, there's nothing you can do about it, then you might as well have something available for a person to, to be as much of themselves as they can be, and I think this allows that. So I'm a supporter.
Any additional conversation? Yes, Senator McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. Turian. Let's go into a discussion, the public hearing trial. I was pleased to see there was some interest in studies and what has evolved over the years. And looking at what Senator Cates provided to us about the Oregon experience, the conclusion was the fears the law would lead to unfortunate and unintended consequences for elderly, disabled, or other vulnerable populations of children to be unfounded. I'm not surprised that that's the result of that study, and I wouldn't be surprised that that would be the result of any follow-on study. My concern is, the only people who could provide testimony that it wasn't, that it was unfortunate or unintended, or unable to provide that testimony, I'm not going to support any of this effort.
Is there additional discussion?
I don't believe we have a motion. I'll make a motion on pass.
Is there a second? Second to by Representative Heinrichsen. Move by Representative Goodtine on to pass. Any additional discussion before we take a vote? Representative Goodtine.
Thank you very much, Senator. I made the motion, so I'm tying it in. You know, everything everybody said this afternoon up here resonates with me, along with a lot of things I've heard outside of this room. Obviously, what I heard in this room, was it just last Friday? Resonates with me also, and, and, and I agree with and respect a lot of what I heard from Senator Brinkley and Representative Scanderson, because it's been, it's, this is, this issue has been a journey for me. And, you know, when we had a little deal with this issue in front of this committee two years ago, I voted against it in this committee, and I voted against it on the floor. I'm going to, I'm going to support this bill again. Some things just take time, and I think we've all sort of on a different path to getting to a place, but I think I'm in a place now where I read this bill and I see the, what I think are really solid predictions, I know, you know? And I'm okay with this, much that I sometimes surprise myself, I'm embarrassed to say it out loud. So obviously, for the bill today, I feel very, very much appreciative of everything I've ever, ever heard on this topic, from people with their blood, and so. Thank you, Mr. Turian.
Any additional discussion? Seeing no additional discussion, then without objection, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion of ought to pass, please raise your hand. And that's, all right, those seven, all opposed, all opposed. That's seven to five, the motion carries. And minority report on to pass. Let's take up 1385, an act to enable foster child remain in a daycare facility selected
Thank you. So LP 1385, an act to enable foster child to remain in a daycare facility selected by a foster parent. This bill requires the department to pay 100% of the childcare expenses incurred by a foster parent for childcare provided in a licensed childcare provider selected by the foster parent, subject to certain determinations of the department. The bill is in response to a proposal by the department to cap daycare payments. I'll skip over the testimony, I have summarized it there. If anyone would like me to go through it, I'd be happy to. But I'll just, I'll move on to the information request. There was a request for a copy of the Cumberland County cost study that was mentioned during the public hearing, and I, it was, I think it was, it was over 50 pages long, so I emailed it to everyone on the committee, but I, I did attach in white the different market rates that were set back in October, on October 1st, 2013. I believe that those are still applicable today. And so you can see the different counties listed there, and the different types of childcare centers, and, and the breakdown attached there in white. There was a question about how challenging is it to open a childcare facility or a home childcare operation, what is currently in place in Maine regarding opening a childcare facility or home childcare? And there was a request for other examples of how Greater Portland has broken out from the rest of Cumberland County and other studies, since there was some talk about, about that at the public hearing. And I did, I did do a search of that, and I, I saw that there was this September 2007 study that was co-sponsored by the department called Cost of Homelessness: Cost Analysis of Permanent Supportive Housing in the State of Maine, Greater Portland. And I just took an excerpt of that and to show that there was an instance where the Greater Portland area, data from the Greater Portland area was compared to York County and then the state of Maine. So I, I found, I don't know if that was the example that the individual was referencing, but I did find one instance anyways where, where that was, that had occurred. There was a proposed amendment by the bill sponsor, Representative Hammond, and, who proposed the following amendment to, to the bill, and he inserted the words, I just included it here, it was just this one line, "The childcare provider must be licensed," and he proposed to amend it to be or certified by the department. And then I also attached in green some of the, or some amendments that were proposed by the department and submitted in their testimony at the public hearing. And then I also attached the preliminary fiscal impact statement in blue to the bill as well. And I'd be happy to review any of those with you at this time. And I also wanted to let the committee know that Mr. Martin, Jim Martin, from the department is here to answer any questions that you have about this.
Thank you. Representative Haskins.
Will you just do that overview? You talked about having a sheet that showed the places in Portland, I mean.
Is this on there?
But it, I don't see it.
It doesn't, it just hasn't broken down by county, not by Portland. There was, I think it was a suggestion that it be broken down by, with Portland and, and I, but I, I didn't.
Okay.
I don't have that. And again, yeah, again, Mr. Martin is available.
Representative Hammond. Representative Haskins, your mic.
Oh, sorry.
And were you saying that there, you found an example of a study that did break down Portland into its own?
I, so I did, I just, I'm doing a search of it, there was some, there was some discussion about whether or not that had occurred before, and I just ran a search and looked, and that there was a, I didn't include the study here, I just took an excerpt of it, but it's, it's, and I listed it on the back of, the back of this page here, and there was a September 2007 study that was co-sponsored by the department, and in there, I just pulled an excerpt from it. It was, it was a lengthy study, and I think that the, the question, as I understood it, was whether or not that's been done. And I, I found an instance where, where that has been done, and that the Greater Portland area was compared to folks living in York County, and then reviewing the state of Maine as a whole. And I don't think that that, that study again was just sponsored by the department, I don't think that they generated it, that their, their name was attached to it, and I, I know that, that there was a question about whether that's ever been done, that had Portland split from Cumberland County in the, for the purposes of studying.
Okay. Maybe a cool question, how's Greater Portland, like Portland and every town in the surrounding area?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I know that was, at least the heart of what I was trying to figure out before is how do we define, define the, are you a Portland area? If we were to look at potential breaking Portland out from, from, from the county for the purpose of these rates? Senator Haskins.
What I know of, it really breaks down small pieces of the labor market area. And that some of those are pretty small.
Um, but we don't have, well, we don't have that available, so. Yeah. Additional discussion? I, you know, I, I recognize, I recognize the problem. I'm trying to figure out what the, what the best way to approach tackling that problem is. I think that's been my question all the time with this bill, whether it's breaking out the Greater Portland area, who knows, Cumberland County, or some other, or some other solution. It's, but I do think, you know, one of the questions, and I, I don't imagine we're going to answer this question, of course, as working on this bill, but I, I do still wonder, what are the, what are the contributing factors to Cumberland County being so much more expensive, you know, as I look at these, than, than other counties in terms of childcare? I mean, I guess that, what are, I know some folks have said to me that the reason something is so expensive is that you can't, you know, you can't make, it's not very, not very profitable as it is, and, but I guess I would, except for the cost of, of real estate, I know that, you know, real estate would be more expensive in Portland than it would be in Washington County. I, I, I can't imagine what the, what the, what other inputs would be more expensive. I don't know if the department, yeah, Representative Hammond.
Thanks. I see what you're getting at with Cumberland County, the expense of the cost of daycare. To me, that isn't, I don't consider that a perfect measure, because it's not, the foster parent doesn't have control over what the cost of daycare is, they're just, they've gone through a licensing class, taken their own time to be volunteers to the state to take children in that are in state custody. I'd love to solve, which has the cost of daycare, but that doesn't get the kids who are right now living in hotel rooms because they can't find a home for them into a foster parent.
I, I understand and appreciate that, and, and I'm, I'm fine with us trying to, you know, treat this, treat directly and immediately treat the symptoms of the problem, which I think is what this is trying to do. And, and I, and I think, and at best, that's probably what we're going to be able to do with, with, with this legislation. I'm just wondering, since the topic is before us, just trying to, if there's any way to understand some of the base causes of the problem first, was?
That's part of the study.
Yeah. Representative Goodtine.
Maybe somebody in the audience can answer that question.
Does anyone have?
Do you have any thoughts as to why childcare might be more expensive in Portland area?
I mean, it could be a basic, a really basic thing, and I'm just not.
Could be something real basic, we're just.
Smart stuff, and I just might not be smart enough to put it together, so.
Good afternoon. Jim Martin, Director of the Office of Child and Family Services with the DHHS. I can't profess to be an expert either, but I would assume it's driven primarily by the market and by the availability of childcare slots. So in areas where there are more slots than children, you may find different rates.
Yeah.
But providers, prior providers have the opportunity to set their rate based on the demand for their business.
I, I guess I, you know, I, I would absolutely say it's driven by the market, but I guess the, you would think that the, the number of slots available would also be driven by the market. I mean, that if there's, I guess that's what they taught me in Economics 101, when there's, when there's higher prices and there's a lot of demand, that's going to incentivize more people to come into the marketplace and try to, you know, provide the products. So I guess I'm wondering why is that not happening in Cumberland County? Is it just because Cumberland County is more urban? Is there something about being more urban that means that the prices are going to go up? I, I don't know the answer.
The bill seeks to address the rate that's being paid by the department.
Oh, I, I understand that.
That, that's the piece, is, I, I think the availability is a different question. It's the matter of the rate.
It's a, it's a bigger question, though, that the bill's seeking to do, but it is kind of, the bill's seeking to address the symptom of what might be a, a problem, I'm just wondering about the problem.
It's in the water.
It's in the, I guess, it's in the water. Yeah, Representative Heinrichsen.
Yeah, thanks. So I'm reading through this report that we, the 50-page report by child, I have to scroll up to see the names, if somebody can see the names. It was, it was my place. You probably know what we were, and it says, "The market rate survey shows that nearly two-thirds of licensed childcare programs in Maine are operated out of family childcare homes, given the primarily rural nature of the state's not surprising." So I think that rural nature, family, mostly family, where people are, they operate out of their own homes, as where in Portland, I'm not sure if that's what happens, and it's another, another set of, it's another real estate expense for the people who own it. I was also going to look at who, if they're licensed, if they're credentialed, and I think the, I seem to remember when I went through this last night, that there's a higher percentage of people who are, who are accredited, who are in the Portland area than in the family homes. In fact, it was hard to get to that answer, because the family home providers didn't answer the questionnaire even after they were asked a number of times. So I think if you want to go through the 50 pages, there may be answers to your questions embedded here.
So I know, is it, my understanding that the, the current rates for reimbursement for childcare for foster, for foster kids makes that distinction between centers and home, and home-based foster care, am I right? I know, am I remembering that correctly? At least that's what appears to be the case on this, the telephone survey we got in the public, the public hearing.
Yes, we do have different rates based on the type of setting.
All right. Probably a bigger, probably a bigger question than we've discussed today. So, any additional discussion? Representative Goodtine.
I'll make a motion on pass with the amendment that the sponsor proposed that the childcare provider must be licensed or certified by the department.
Is there a second? Second, Senator Haskell, move by Representative Goodtine. Any discussion? Representative Hammond.
Senator, just wanted to briefly point out that it brought to our attention that certified or otherwise approved by the department, convention, or inclusion of children.
Any additional discussion? Representative Goodtine. Representative Hammond, your mic.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Representative Hammond, for bringing this issue. It does have a noticeable fiscal note, and I'm hoping that this will run through and get to the table. Again, I think that, I think my bottom line is, you know, we need to do whatever we can to support children who go with foster care, and foster parents who are going to take on that tremendous responsibility and, and partnership of the department. And I know the department is, is really struggling, they're working hard to try to push families that take in children in foster care, and, and I realize this costs money, like a lot of the things that we struggle with here. But I think the opportunity to provide a, a stable place for these children to grow is critically important. The reality is that, you know, the parents that take on these children have jobs, they have lives, you know, that's, that's the reality that they, that they deal with. And, and part of the stability that we need to provide to these children includes the stability of foster, of daycare. And, and, and I think that that's what the sponsor intended to be brought over with this bill, which I think is very well thought out, and I hope the committee gives strong inspirational support.
Senator Haskell.
I'm going to follow up on my comments of the other day regarding, thank you, Mr. Jim, I want to follow up on my comments of the other day regarding the fiscal note. The DHHS office in Portland for the past five years has been waiting for this one. The numbers that have been reimbursed and in the budget for that length of time have reflected the fact that that's been the policy at that office. Whether that should have been their policy or should not have been their policy, I, I don't know. That's purely up to the department to talk about why and how something like that happens. When those are the dollars that have already been reflected in the budget, I just find it very difficult to understand how you could come up with a calculation on what this would cost if this simply is going to replace what has already been happening. So that Senate makes sense. I'd be hoping to have any kind of response that you'd like to have today.
Absolutely, and thank you, Senator, I appreciate that question. The legislation you have in front of you is not targeting just York County, you're passing legislation for the entire state of Maine. So the implication of this affects the entire state in all of the rates that we have set in every DHHS district office.
Okay, thank you. Makes more sense.
I'll say that, I'm like, thank you, that makes more sense.
You're welcome.
I'll, I'll just say for myself, I, if we had a lot more time to work on this, I, I think this is a, a real problem, and, and I would love to, you know, have some kind of solution that I could bring to. I, seeing that we're just, seeing that we would pay for 100% without regard to, without, without regard to the cost, and I, I think there's a real problem, and I'd like to get some solutions on that. I don't think this is a, a solution I can support because of the fiscal note, because of the cost of it, because, because I think that there are, I think there is, to tackle this problem with a scalpel rather than a, rather than a, a sludge. That's an imperfect analogy, so I apologize, my analogy skills are on today, but.
It's Friday.
I got it. But if, if we did have more time and. But if, if we did have more time, unfortunately, we're coming up on deadlines, if we did have more time, I would love to work on this further. I really appreciate Representative Hammond bringing this forward and bringing this real con to our attention. I would love to, you know, regardless of the status of this bill, I would love to hear, maybe hear back from the department on the second session, if there's, if there's been any, love to see if they, particularly if there are these areas where the rates that we are reimbursing for childcare are significantly lower than, than the rates that are available. I'd love to, I'd love to hear more about that in the second session if that's something, I know we've asked the department to bring a lot of stuff back to us for the second session. But anyway, I, I hope this isn't, I, I hope this isn't the end of this issue, even if this isn't the solution I would support, I do think there is a real problem here. Representative Haskell?
When this bill was first brought forward, I said absolutely, I am, I am on board and I, I'm gonna tell you, the, the difference in price of, of what the department was reimbursing versus the rates that these daycare centers charge concerns me with, with the fiscal note. But this, this said, I am, I'm gonna remain true to my support of this because I believe that these children in foster care and the parents that choose to foster them are making a serious commitment to, to the child and these are our future and we need them to have the best success in, in nurturing and, that's why I'm, I'm making a decision to, to, to support this, I am concerned about, about the fiscal note, however.
Representative Hammond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate your comments and your sentiment that you're supportive of the, the concept of the bill. And I also understand that we are under time constraints with the committee. For me, I'm willing to spend as much time as necessary to get this right because it's, frankly, the problem's gonna go away. Kids who are in foster care, in state custody, state is responsible for that child until they're in kindergarten, high school, sixth, if, if we further cause harm to that child by not getting it into a foster home, into a stable environment as quickly as possible. I've heard stories about foster children staying in hotel rooms with their caseworker because they don't have a foster home. These children have already been outsourced, already victims of abuse and neglect and then to, I'm sure they're in great care with a caseworker, I don't think it's appropriate, but sometimes necessary, but it's not ideal to have a child, a foster child, not in a foster home. Anything you can do to expedite that process, I think, is in the state's best financial interests, long-term financial interest interests, to invest now in a few extra dollars in daycare to be sure that a foster parent is a volunteer and also working, has access to whatever daycare they can get, a slot available for, for that child that they're willing to bring into their home. Foster parents will do all the work, they're gonna deal with any behavioral issues they're having and the health issues, they're gonna do all the work necessary, all the more is the support so they can do the work during the day to pay the bills. If they don't have daycare available and accessible, the markets won't be paid for, they won't take that place. I have heard those stories where parents, foster parents won't pay them in places because, because of this cap being replaced. And to me, that's all this is about. It's not about having Cadillac daycare for every kid across the state, that's not necessarily in, in my interest, or I think anybody's interest, it's just access to daycare for every single foster parent or any foster kid. It, it does seem to be a unique situation in, in the greater Portland area. You know, I, I can, you know, with a couple of possible solutions, one solution being to carve out a labor, you know, a labor market area in greater Portland, go, go back, look at the market analysis and then do another analysis just for the greater Portland area where it is moving more expensive. And then integrate that into the analysis, however, the cost of going back and redoing the analysis, correct me if I'm wrong. And then one other possible solution, if that wasn't, that would be too expensive, would just be to sort of formalize a waiver process, keep, keep the market rates in effect exactly as they are. But if the foster parent has these specific circumstance where they're willing to take a child in, however, when the caseworker calls and says we have a child that we'd like to place them with you, part of that conversation, as you know, there is a very likely personal conversation. One aspect could be, you know, the foster parent saying, I am willing to take the placement, however, I would need to place the child with this daycare. I understand that that is two hundred and twenty-five dollars, this particular daycare, which is the only one that can be available, is two hundred and seventy-five dollars. And then have a formalized waiver process where that foster parent with the caseworker can be approved, maybe through the caseworker supervisor, to approve that or disapprove that and say, well, we, we'd rather have, we'd rather pay two seven five instead of two twenty-five a week for that child's daycare. Rather have that situation than have the kid that I would help with and that's part of the process. But, you know, leave the cap as it is, have the market rates as they are, but then have a formalized waiver process based on certain criteria to be determined with your expertise. And to have some, formalized a waiver process, so that, you know, Senator Johnson to me, they said, well, jeez, that's, I don't have a great idea to have, you know, a hundred percent because I could open up daycare, only cater to foster kids and I charge five hundred dollars a week. And the state has to pay, and I'm like, jeez, maybe that's, that could be not the best solution. So I understand cost and danger and I understand what that's, this is all about, I understand the department has absolutely no interest in putting kids in harm anywhere.